Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the Currituck County Monday, November 1st, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone who's here this evening and viewing us live, hopefully. The first quarter call, I'd like to open the meeting up with the first call of order and invocation and pledge of allegiance. And I would ask that if Commissioner Beaumont would lead us in there?
Be happy to.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this glorious day, Lord. I thank you for the cooling temperatures, Father, which help us to truly appreciate the summer. Father, as we enter the season of holidays, first and foremost, Lord, our hearts and minds go to our families, Father. And during this season, as we lead up to Thanksgiving, Father, may we prepare even now for how thankful we are for all that you've bestowed upon not only us personally, but us as a county, Father, us as a state, and us as a country. Father, I am thankful that I live in Currituck County. Father, of all the places on earth, Lord, this is the one. Father, I pray that we would all be thankful about this wonderful place that we call home. Lord, bless this evening's proceedings. Father, give each and every one of the commissioners wisdom as we hear the cases before us and the issues before this county. Father, I pray that you would help us to judge righteously, Father, and find your will in our decisions, Lord. We bless this evening in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for
Thank you, Vice Chairman. The next item is the approval of agenda. Do we have any changes? Can I ask for a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Motion in a second. Etheridge, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is going to be public comment. This is a time again for the citizens to come before this board, speak what there was on their mind, any discussions, anything they want to talk about. We will give your attention. And I have no one signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who didn't sign up, would love to come up and speak at public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And the next item is going to be the commissioner's report. And this evening, I'm going to start off to my left and start with Commissioner Jarrett.
Thank you. Not much, just to continue what Commissioner Beaumont put in his prayer. Just November does bring to mind gratitude. And I'm thankful for my family. I'm thankful for the faith that people put in me in this job. And I'm thankful for my friends. And with that, I would like to wish my friend and fellow Commissioner Kitty Etheridge a very happy birthday tomorrow. Thank you.
Twenty-one? Or is it tomorrow's twenty-two?
Thank you, Commissioner Jarrett. Next, we have tomorrow's birthday girl, Commissioner Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to say, I guess everybody's noticed that our clerk to the board is not here today. And she was involved in an accident. And we certainly hope for a speedy recovery. I think everybody's been praying for her. And we certainly miss her. But we're glad we've got somebody that'll do just as good a job sitting over there. We're talking about being thankful. I know when we give our commissioner reports, it's supposed to be about you're serving on advisory boards. But I just feel like, you know, years ago, when I used to, as a teenager, ride through Currituck County, I never in my wildest dreams thought I would ever live here. And I'm like, Paul, I just love it to death. And we read where people on social media, and Kevin has talked about this a lot, people can just be really ugly. You need to get involved. Don't be talking about things that you don't know anything about unless you've looked at commissioner meetings and know where people stand. You don't need to be commenting. Get involved. There are advisory boards that you can serve on. We're always looking for people to do that. Plus, run for office. If you don't like what we're doing, replace us. That's what I say. And speaking of volunteers and being thankful and people getting out and doing things, I attended an advisory board meeting for the senior citizen this past week. And they don't even have enough volunteers to do the meals on wheels. Folks, we don't want you to volunteer for every day, but just if you would do it once a month. You need to get out there and volunteer and stop complaining and keep Currituck the great county it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge. Commissioner White?
Well, happy birthday tomorrow. And not much for me this evening. We, I second your, the meetings are open to the public. Our work sessions are open to the public. Everything we do, if there's more than three of us, is considered a meeting, and it's open to the public, and you're welcome to attend. If you really want to know what's going on in the county, come to a work session. We realize that it may be a hardship on you. Maybe you have to be at work or some other place to be, or kids, or sports, or whatever. But we all find the time to do it as commissioners and take away from our everyday lives to do it. So if you do want to know what's going on, I've said it every year I've been on this board, to come up to our annual retreat. I don't know, I think we still need to change that to our annual work session because we don't actually run away to anywhere except right here in this room, except for occasionally going over to Corolla to do a meeting over there, if there's a lot on the agenda for Corolla in the coming year. Those are typically right around January, and the public is welcome to attend those. So tune in, pay attention to the website. We have all those meetings listed. Even our advisory board meetings are open to the public. You're welcome to come to any of those meetings and see what's going on and become involved. And we're always looking for volunteers or people to serve on those boards. They're very easy to get on for the most part. If we have an opening and your name is in the hat, we're probably going to give you a call. And it's an easy, simple application. Just put your name and number down and what you'd like to serve on. I think we have some like fifteen boards in the county, everything from animal control to you name it. So senior citizen advisory board. So yeah, get involved. Come see us. We're here. We'll listen. Call us up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner White, I just want to say happy birthday as well to the young, lovely young lady down there. And reiterate as well, too, I think, you know, all the commissioners here would love to chat with you, talk to you. You know, call the commissioners, you know, if you have a question, get it clarified. Talk to us. I tell everybody, look, call me. I'll be glad to talk to you. I'll explain it to you and give you what's going on instead of this hearsay. Sometimes it's awful out there. People make assumptions and they hear something. And it's like that old game when you pass something down long enough, it gets changed so much, it's farthest from the truth than you can ever believe. So please call me or Commissioner. They'd be glad to clear anything up that you've got a question for. Contact information is on the website. You can call the clerk to the board. They'll get you the information. So just please, get involved, get the answers to your questions yourself. Don't rely on a friend or social media to clarify stuff out there. And I do want to reiterate, yes, we're going to be missing Leanne while she's recouping. But again, we do have Samantha Evans. And I'm going to put her on the spot because recently she's been going through training. And she recently, correct me if I'm wrong, we got your certification for clerk to the board. Or is that correct? So now you are a certified clerk to the board. So congratulations. So she's just recently, recently got that prior to the accident. So, but anyways, congratulations. Glad to have you here. Other than that, just be safe during this holiday season. Remember your fire departments, your volunteers, they're out there going through a lot of hazards and being on the streets and fighting fires for this time of year. So just do anything you can to help them out. And that's all I have. And I'll turn it over to Vice Chairman Beaumont.
I'll pile on and wish you a happy birthday. In fact, I think by the time we get to Owen, we should go ahead and just sing it and get it over with. But we could be first, right? So again, you know, congratulations on reaching yet another birth anniversary. So good on that. And, you know, this is the time for, at least personally, introspection and why I'm thankful. And, you know, I think if a lot more people spent time at looking at what they do have and not as much as what they think they should have or what they want, I think we'd all go a lot further. And, you know, I'll use a line that I heard at the high school the other day. You don't like the high school here, you need to get out a little more and look at what's going on in other high schools around this region. And while everybody thinks Virginia is great, A, B, and C, D, and the F, you know, this is a great place to live. It is a great place to work. And, you know, God has blessed us abundantly. And, you know, all I can say is, before you smash the boat that you're on, you better look at what happens if you succeed in sinking it. And that, to me, is a lot of what's going on, you know, online and through Facebook, is, you know, it's easy to throw grenades. But like the commissioners previous, send us an email, right? Hey, I'd really like to know your opinion on A, B, and C. Because I can guarantee you, and I can testify to this, if I get asked a question, I don't know the answer, I'm going to make sure it goes to someone that can give you the answer that you're asking for. If you're, if you're looking forward to Facebook to getting the answer, you're going to get exactly what you deserve. So, you know, please, an email's a quick, easy line. And there's not a commissioner up here that wouldn't either be happy to answer your question or get you moving in a direction where you can find out the straight story. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. And next, Commissioner McCord.
I'm just going to recall 2020, when I was the first one to wish Ms. Kitty happy birthday. So I'll go ahead and put that out there again. Happy birthday, Ms. Kitty. And I'll call you tomorrow morning when I wake up for the work at the Sheriff's Department at like five. No, I'm just kidding. But happy birthday. Like I said, on some, as the other commissioner said, reference social media, like you said, and people post stuff. If it's on Facebook, it's not always true. I don't know if people know that. If you Google it, it's not always true.
Ms. Kitty's post was true.
But yeah. But like you said, they, you know, like you said, I mean, we had a good meeting today about some stuff that was discussed all over Facebook. And like I said, you know, all of us up here, we're not doing it for the money. We're not doing it for the probably thirty-five phone calls that I got on Sunday yesterday. We're doing it because we care. We live here. There might be some mental issues maybe with us for doing it. But, you know, it is what it is. Holiday season's coming up. Be vigilant this time of year. And I hate to say this, and this is not like a negative thing, but lock your vehicles. We've solved a lot of crime in the month of October at the Sheriff's Department, a lot of crime. So, but we don't want additional crimes to solve. But lock your vehicles, be safe in the holiday season because that's sometimes when the crimes are on the rise. It's not people stealing to get their family something. It's the same people that steal twenty-four seven, year-round. But I mean, just be vigilant, especially this time of year. It's a little bit more. Christmas parade, December 3rd, you can email me. I have two emails for the county. My Sheriff's Department one is the one that we prefer that's on the entry. If you email it to my commissioner, email myself and Sheila Gregory from the Crawford Extension have been working on the Christmas parade. We didn't have it last year. This will be the twenty-eighth one. We skipped twenty-eight last year because of COVID, but it's back. On a, I guess this is kind of a positive note as well as kind of a sad note. Commissioner Etheridge actually attended. Last Thursday, one of our sergeants that worked at Currituck County for almost thirty years, he retired with a thirty-year retirement due to sick leave, built up. The guy was a very, very, very hard worker. He gave so much to Currituck County. His last day, when I met him at the office Saturday, I had to work because one of the shifts was short to check his vehicle in and everything. He literally made me check the oil on his vehicle before he gave me the keys. But Sergeant Joey Davidson retired from the Currituck County Sheriff's Office on, technically, his last day was Friday. But Thursday, we had his retirement luncheon. There were seventy-some of us that attended, county staff and family members of his, as well as other county officials, as well as retirees. Joey did, I mean, just crazy. I mean, he worked here, a numerous thing. I mean, I could just go on. I could take a forty-minute commissioner comment, but I'm not going to do that. But like I said, Joey's was a huge asset to the county. He, literally, I went through the list of all the different officers that he was either their FTO or, when I say FTO, Field Training Officer, I mean, our sheriff, our clerk of court, our chief deputy, myself, I'm a lieutenant, Lieutenant Neil Smith, Captain Kevin Bray. I named like in the room, and you always forget somebody when you put names out or say names, and you don't want to say names because you're going to forget somebody. And I did. But there's tons of leaders in our agency as well as leaders, James Midgets, the clerk of court in Camden. Joey was his supervisor. So, I mean, he touched a lot of people. And, I mean, just a lot of lives in Currituck County. The guy did, I mean, he was just, there's nobody that was more dedicated than Joey to helping people. He would charge somebody when he worked narcotics and charge them everything that you could think of. And then he would help them when it went to court. And he wasn't doing it to try to be a, what's the word I'm looking for? I'm just going to say it. He wasn't doing it to be a turd. He was doing it to try to stop them from what they were doing. Him and Sergeant Jesse Taylor and Nathan Lars, they put on a presentation. I believe Bob White attended that. And two, they would put it to high school of drugs, how not only they affect that person doing it, but their family. And it was a presentation they put on at the high school that these three guys paid for out of their own pocket. The whole program, they had it on PowerPoint videos and stuff. And they had a lot of stuff in their lives that happened to them is why they were so, they gave their personal cell phones out to all those kids in high school. And I'm not going to, I can't discuss one of the scenarios. But basically, Joey received a call one night at like 2:00 a.m. and a little girl was thinking about hurting herself. And he talked her out of it. That's it for me. But congratulations to him on his retirement.
Thank you, Commissioner McCord. And now Commissioner Owen Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Like Kevin said, I did attend that retirement luncheon and greatly impressed by listening to the comments of the various people that stood up and talked about Joey and what he meant to them as individuals and to the agency of Currituck County Sheriff's Department. I asked him, I said, what are you going to do now that you're retired? And that was the most impressive thing I heard the whole day was he said, I'm going to keep working with young people, trying to help keep them straight and find a better path than what a lot of them end up going down. It did make me feel a little old because he started as a deputy the same year I was first elected. And
Thank you, twenty-four.
But, you know, we are, we are in the Thanksgiving month. And happy birthday. And I challenge each and every one of us. I hear so many people say, I don't have anything to be thankful of. And if you read what's on Facebook, you get that impression. Stop every day and just think about it for a minute. And keep yourself a diary about the things that we do need to be thankful for each and every day. And then when we get to Thanksgiving Day, reflect on it and really be thankful on Thanksgiving Day because hopefully you'll be with your family, you'll be with friends. And we do have a lot to be thankful for. But if we don't get our act together in this country, we're going to lose it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge. And the next item is going to be our county manager slash county attorney report.
Well, first of all, I too am on the birthday train. Happy birthday, Commissioner Etheridge. Secondly, a number of people have wondered, as have I, when I first saw them last year, what are the white signs around the county with capital CE and red followed by a number? I guess we have determined that apparently they are, they are the locations of construction entrances for Dominion Power crews. And if you drive by some of them, you will see their Dominion Power trucks coming in and out of those locations, or you'll see a power crew back on lines adjacent to these signs that are up and down the road. So that is what those signs are all about. Secondly, I wanted to get some direction from the board. I'm like, if I'm going to get it here or not. Anyway, I have been called by an individual associated with J.D. Lewis Construction Management Company who has acquired ownership of the historic Long Point Coast Guard quarters, which evidently is located at the old Harrison Marina. Oh, there it is. And he has asked, as he has now acquired ownership of this, and he needs to move it from the site. He has made inquiries whether the county would be interested in selling one of its two lots adjacent to the Wellhead Club, which may be coming up on the screen. I don't know. You remember, we own those, the county owns those two lots adjacent to the Wellhead Club on Village Lane in Corolla. So I said to the end, to this gentleman, James Flanagan, that I would bring it to the board to gauge the board's interest on, first of all, whether you would be inclined to entertain an offer on either of the lots that the county owns at this location.
What would, what would happen? So he would move that building there and?
He explains that his interest, his interest and intent would be to move that building there, to renovate it. Of course, then it would be a single-family residential use and rented.
Did they end up putting a house on that middle lot?
There is a house there in between the county lots.
And I guess we don't, at this time, as far as towards, did you talk to Tamara at all?
I've not spoken to Tamara.
Because I know, we had talked about something, having those for storage or something like that in the future.
We had at one time, there's even a larger plan, I think, of the Wellhead or historic Corolla Park site, to even turn that into some type of garden area or playground or something. So.
I would personally would not be inclined to sell those right now. I don't think we're quite figured out what's going to happen with them. But.
I agree.
If that's consensus of the board, I'll give that information back to Mr. Flanagan.
But having said that, he's not going to, you don't believe he will destroy that historic building, do you?
Well, he's going to have to, he said he will have to find a place to move it, or it will have to be destroyed. Because evidently that Harrison Marina has been sold. And I think the new owners are looking to have that structure removed from the property. Next, there are four buildings the county owns. I'd like some direction from the board as to how we should deal with them. First of all, the former highway patrol office, actually is the single wide mobile home up the road here. Of course, highway patrol now has new space and a new public safety building. Our Public Works folks tell me that it is in very poor condition, and they would recommend disposal if the board has no other interest in that.
The seventies trailer, is that what that?
Probably.
I've been in it in 2021. It's in very poor condition.
Well, then we'll proceed to.
I would, yeah, I think the board, just have them get rid of it.
Because there's no objection, we proceed with disposition of that. Next is adjacent to that, the current Soil and Water Conservation Office, which formerly housed emergency medical services. Emergency Medical Services, of course, moved into the public safety building. Soil and Water Conservation Office will be moving into the small white building in front of the Crawford Township Fire Department building down by Knapp School. Public Works says that it's in poor condition, estimates that it probably costs fifty thousand dollars in repairs with new HVAC and other updating inside, and recommends surplus of that single wide as well.
And that's located where?
It's adjacent to.
It's right beside it.
Right beside the highway patrol, oh, highway patrol.
That one's in better shape, but not much better.
Because that's, because that's, go ahead and get it removed. Is that anybody on board?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Thirdly, Commissioner Etheridge's former office, the Elections Mobile Unit, the Public Works staff estimates it probably needs at least forty thousand dollars in repairs for siding, underpinning, exterior paint. And they are uncertain about at this point if any interior repairs necessary.
Are you talking about the office they're presently in?
Well, they've now moved into what was EMS offices in the, in the health building. So they now are housed there. And so the trailer, the mobile unit currently, the modular office building is currently vacant. And so we either need to find a purpose for that with some rehab or look to remove it entirely.
Ms. Kitty might want to buy it.
All right, hold time, say.
How old is that roughly, yeah? Twenty, twenty years?
No, closer to thirty.
Goes back to when Owen was first elected commissioner.
One long after that.
It's probably, probably close to thirty.
Have a purpose for it now? Do we need, do we have a particular need for any department?
We did, we, well, we are getting, we are out of space on this campus. We're quickly running out of it. Now, there's some space is going to open up as central communications moves over to the public safety building eventually.
Which I believe that's what they were made.
Well, we're hoping sooner if we can acquire the furniture.
But could we use it temporarily for a few more months or something until we can?
I was going to say, I think it probably worth, if the building is sound itself, then it may be worth, it's cheaper to fix it than it is to tear it down and replace it.
Or at least fix it enough to give us.
Right, and get it, get it, maybe ten, half dozen years or, you know.
I think it's some ass or sitting behind that knife complex.
We could paint it brick. I mean, we can jazz it up. But.
Well, maybe we ought to have a better analysis made of the building and its structural.
Yeah.
I would. If we need space, I hate to get too, move too fast if we need space.
Case in point.
Well, yeah.
And get our public affairs officer out of the.
Can you get us a little better assessment?
The water closet?
We'll get a better assessment on that. And then lastly, we had the building in Grandy that the sheriff department was housed in for some time down there. I guess the sheriff department is all completely out of that building.
One hundred percent. And I believe there possibly maybe be some mold in that building.
Well, Public Works has been in there. Layton does not believe, he's really seen any mold. But he estimates it'd probably take, in any event, sixty thousand dollars of replacement of carpeting and some upfitting inside the building. But there is a need, at least from Public Utilities, that's expressing interest in being able to house some of their folks in that building.
The other thing interesting is how many square feet.
Yeah, I don't know right offhand.
And that, you know, because that dollar number seems maybe initially high.
Yeah, and I need.
Size buildings.
Seven, there's seven offices in there.
I bet it's two thousand square feet.
I can attest that the air conditioner is fairly new.
About twenty-two. Yeah, the air conditioner, the heating and air is two to three years old. That's the nicest thing probably on the property.
We'll bring you back some better analysis of the Elections Office and the Grandy Building. And we will proceed with the disposition of the highway patrol and former EMS single wides.
Speaking about single wides and double wides, Paradise Homes, notice they mowed the lot.
Yes.
So that's an occurrence.
We mowed the lot in order to allow for potential purchasers to better access the property. We have determined probably the better route to dispose of those units is to place them on gov deals. We've been in communication with gov deals where we also place county surplus property for folks to bid on. We would look to have someone bid, hopefully, on the entirety of a unit. And then it's their responsibility to get it off the property and move along. So we're developing the type of advertisement with all the terms and conditions and explanation of how the county has come into possession through court order and has the ability to sell these units. So we're moving along on that track now to get the property cleared in that manner. Hopefully, that will take care of it. If it doesn't, then we are looking to going in and demolishing what is left and selling whatever surplus property. whatever surplus property, like the chassis have any value.
How about the other two structures?
Those two, I'd need to get back with the Building Department, Building Inspectors to start again the minimum housing ordinance proceedings. I guess that they started some time ago, and it was never followed through with, is my understanding.
There's a couple of them that have, like, I mean, like, you could maybe sell the trees that are growing through them.
Yeah.
You'd have to demolish the house to get to the trees.
Right, there's two on East Ridge Road in the same.
This has been a three-year topic in counting.
Yep, so I will get with the Building Inspectors this week. We'll start that process and get that underway as well. And then last, I was going to report, I got an update. Commissioner White had presented the issue of the missing sidewalk piece in front of where the ABC store will eventually be built. It is kind of a hazard, this missing section of sidewalk, as all there is is large chunks of gravel in between two pieces of the sidewalk. This afternoon, is it Whitehurst? Whitehurst did call our Assistant County Engineer back, and they are prepared now to give us a quote and then to mobilize on replacing that section of sidewalk. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
They took it out, sort of with the construction equipment, was going to put that three stone or whatever it is, the bigger, you know, base line. So, yeah, I'll watch people get off their bikes there and try to take baby straws across it, so.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. All right, the next item under our agenda is public hearings. And the first item we have is PV 21-20 Baxter Tate Baxter Station. Allied Properties LLC is requesting conditional zoning of 53.43 acres owned by Jarvis Harvest LLC from agricultural zoning district to conditional mixed residential district to allow 60 single-family detached lots within an age-restricted community located in Moyac on the south side of Baxter Lane adjoining Baxter Lane Estates to the east and Hidden Oaks to the south. Tax map nine, parcel 25A, Moyac Township, and I believe this is going to be Tammy Glave.
It is, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just for clarification, that's 80 single-family detached lots.
Did I not say that? I'm sorry.
Just to orient you, this is just a contextual map to show you where the property is located. This is the state line, the yellow line that runs across the top. Across the street, you'll see the Bank of Curry Tuck and the Methodist Church here, and then Baxter Lane runs here. And then when we zoom in a bit, that'll help you a little better tell where you are. This is Hidden Oaks subdivision that was approved a few years ago. And again, you can see the bank and the church. The current zoning of the property is agricultural, and you can see some of the surrounding property, or a lot of the surrounding property, has been rezoned to conditional single-family mainland. There is some general business, and there is similar conditional mixed residential to the north. Land use plan, keep this in the back of your mind, we're going to talk about it in a little bit, but the land use plan classifies this property as rural. But then when you flip to the Moyac Small Area Plan, that's a more specific and detailed plan for the Moyac area, it does have a full service zoning, a full service designation. This is just an overview map of the subdivision, and we'll come back to it in a moment, but just to orient you, this is Baxter Lane. And then you can see the lots that are laid out. There's two entrances. You can see the drainage pond that will be turned into a water feature for the community. And then you can see another, we'll talk about this too, but another amenity is a dog park, and then they have added some extra landscaping there to make an entrance feature. This may look familiar to you. Back in 2019, the developer was proposing a conditional planned development residential district, or PDR. At the time, that was for 103 single-family dwellings and 44 duplexes with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. They were proposing an on-site wastewater treatment plant, and the planning board did recommend the denial of that because it was inconsistent with the land use plan and the Moyac Small Area Plan. And the proposal was determined to be incompatible with the surrounding subdivisions and neighborhood. It was served by Moyac Elementary School, which was and remains over capacity. I don't know that y'all actually saw the request. It was withdrawn prior to you taking action on the request. Again, it's 80 single-family dwelling units, and the key component here, that is less dwelling units, but the key component here is that they are requesting a 55 and older community, meaning that all of the occupants of all the dwelling units in the development will be 55 or older. So that takes out the conflict with the school capacity issues. And the HOA would be in charge of responding, would be in charge for reviewing and enforcing that age restriction, and they would do that every two years. And the way they do that is through their HOA covenants. According to the applicant's attorney, the county can accept an age restriction as a covenant, and it's legally enforceable as a zoning condition.
Okay, Tammy, can I ask just one quick question then? If the HOA is going to enforce it, I don't know what they're trying, did they have, can they legally, if somebody buys it or moves in with children, can they legally cancel the sale or move them out?
That would probably be better answered by the applicant, but what they said at planning board was that they would be required to sell the home if there were people found living.
Thank you.
Our Stormwater Manager will tell you, this is the most significant flooding call that he gets throughout the county is in this area. And as you know, with a conditional zoning, the applicant proposes conditions that the board must agree to. And one of the things that the applicant is willing to do is to improve Baxter Lane ditch, and also to keep more stormwater on site through site design and berm's than they're required to do to keep that from offsite flooding. There's also an undersized culvert at the very end of Baxter Lane Extension on private property. You can't even see it on that map. Let me see if I can go back a little bit more. So it's down here somewhere. And that is undersized, and it's not at the proper grade, so that's also causing some water to back up, and the applicant is offering to fix that as well.
Tammy, that's the one that I think, if I'm remembering correctly, when DOT installed the culvert, the county's water line was in the way, and so they just basically put the culvert on top of the water line, not dropping the culvert to the right.
Yes, there is a conflict right now because there is a county water line beneath the culverts. And as the utility director explained to me, that's not a good thing. Some, again, a little zoomed-in picture of some of the amenities. You'll see a landscaping feature at the entrance, the dog park to the rear. And then they're calling this a waterfront guarding along that drainage pond, and that also has additional landscaping, walking pass, it has a pergola and some seating there. I told you we'd come back to land use plan, and that's, this is where we're going to do that. In order for this to be approved at the density that the developer is requesting, the property would have to go from that rural designation to full service. I'm sure you've heard us talk about the general statute, 160D, that was a total rewrite of the general statutes for local government law. That actually allows the board to amend a plan that is not consistent with that map, and what that does is it automatically amends the map, the land use plan map. So if you approve the development, you're automatically approving that land use plan reclassification, and it's just another sentence you have to put in your motion, and you'll see that when we get there. And the Moyac Small Area Plan, which is a plan that's more specific and detailed to the Moyac area, does classify this as full service, so staff certainly supports that land use plan amendment. This is a slide that y'all have asked for previously. It examines how many lots could potentially be developed now as it exists in the agricultural zoning district compared to what the applicant's actually requesting. Big disclaimer, these are rough numbers, raw data. They're not taking any restrictions or conditions on the property or anything like that, so just for reference purposes. So it is zoned agricultural, so the UDO requires that to be developed as a conservation subdivision. The applicant has two choices with a conservation subdivision. If he chooses to do a 50% open space, he'll have a density of .33 units per acre, minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet, and he can get about 17 lots. If he bumps up that open space to 60%, while the minimum lot size remains 30,000, the density increases a bit to .4, so roughly 23 lots. So as it exists today without rezoning, there's somewhere between 17 and 23 lots that could be developed. So what the developer is requesting is the MXR zoning, and that's assuming that we agree that that land use plan amendment will go through. They're requesting 80 lots at a 15,000 square foot minimum. The required open space is 30%. They're offering 38%. And with that full service, they're allowed up to two units per acre, and they're requesting 1.49 units per acre. And as we discussed, with a conditional zoning, the developer proposes conditions that the board has to agree to, and if the technical review committee or the board offer additional conditions, the developer would have to agree to those as well. The first one is regarding that age restriction. I won't read it word for word to you, but basically, it's that all of the occupants of all of the units will be 55 and older. Now, I think the attorney's letter is in your packet that explains, I believe it's an 80% rule, and the developer is offering to go above that. So it would be 100% rule, that 100% of the people would be over 55 or over. And that before the first house is ever built, the restrictive covenants will be enforced or be written to address that. To address the drainage concerns, they're willing to perform modeling of Baxter Lane ditch to its outlet at Jarvis Landing Subdivision. I'm sorry, it's Jarvis, Jarvis property, the Landing Subdivision. Based on those model results, they'll make improvements to Baxter Lane ditch along the Baxter Station property boundaries, including deepening, widening, laying back the slopes, and putting it on the proper grade. And those improvements would be made prior to the first phase of their development being recorded. They're offering to record an easement along Baxter Station, part of the ditch, so on their property, record an easement, so that way the county can continue to maintain that ditch. They will include provisions in their restrictive covenants that the HOA will be responsible for maintenance of that ditch and collecting funds to make sure the funds are there to maintain that ditch.
Tammy?
Yes.
Going back, I think, a couple of points, you said that so that the county can maintain the ditch, is that, and then you said that the HOA will be maintaining the ditch? So there will be, if, there will be an easement in case the HOA fails, whatever, and the county needs to get access?
Right.
So I just want to make sure their intention is not that we maintain.
No, their intention is that the HOA maintain it, but there'll be an easement there in case something happens, so that way we would have legal right of access. Good question. Again, they're managing a 100-year storm, so a larger storm event than is required, including berm's around the property is necessary to prevent any runoff from Baxter Station during a 100-year storm event. And if the county is available, is, sorry, if the county is able to obtain necessary rights of entry agreements, they will replace that undersized culvert at the end of Baxter Lane Extension with a proper-sized culvert. It's my understanding that Dylan with Solomar has been working with folks to get that permission. I don't know that it's been legally vetted to make sure that those permissions are all there, legally, but I know there has been some work done on that.
With regard to item F, I will say we've identified now the owner of that roadway, and the owner has agreed to convey an easement to the county for at least that culvert area across the road.
Okay, good, that's good.
TRC proposed a few conditions, and one is what Mr. Beaumont spoke about. There is a water line located directly under that undersized culvert that we've asked that the developer either relocate or come up with a plan with Public Utilities to fix that issue. And if the development stops participating in the federally regulated age-restricted community program, that they would be required to come back to y'all to get an amended conditional zoning approval before folks less than 55 years of age could occupy a dwelling unit, and that the land use plan amendment happen.
Let me go back, if you go back, I'm sorry.
You might ask the same question, I'm going to go ahead.
So... Did we go back too far?
Let me go, let's see.
Item one. And it's, and this may be more rhetorical than anything else, but it seems to me that, because I've talked to Eric, good to see you, Eric, that that water line, there is no choice, but it's got to, it's, something's got to happen to it. So it's kind of a, you can't lower the culvert without moving the water line, so I find it kind of irrelevant that we're requiring them to move a water line that has to move to do it in the first place, I guess.
Well, I think this is assigning responsibility as who will bear the cost of moving that. And the developer agreed at planning board to these conditions, that they, once they're in there pulling up that old culvert, that they will move this water line.
And Tammy, before you go, stay right there.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, some clarity on number two, okay? If they, if the development stopped participating in the voluntary HUD, they have to, before anybody 55, can, under that, can move in there, it's got to be amended. What if it doesn't get amended?
Then they would be, assuming that they are successful with their preliminary plat use permits, subdivision approval, they would be in violation of their subdivision approval.
And then nobody, okay, then they, if it doesn't get approved, then it has to stay 55 and all of that. Okay, whether they want to or not, okay.
So if it's the, if someone is in the subdivision in violation, whose responsibility is it to follow up to make sure that that's not being done? You said the HOA, what?
Excellent question. So the HOA is who is in charge of that, responsible for that. And one of the slides, we're going to talk about enforcement action, because as you know, enforcement often involves back on the county. That would be a very difficult situation for the county to enforce because it would basically be eviction. So we're hoping that the HOA is successful in following the requirements.
They have a pretty, a lot of authority in these areas, do they not, to?
More than we do, actually.
Yeah, I mean, I'm part of an HOA, a business HOA, but we have a lot of power, basically, to regulate what goes on and control it.
Well, it's in essence a contractual agreement between the purchaser and the homeowners association, the covenants. Now, that's also assuming that the homeowners association is a functioning homeowner association that is able and willing to enforce its covenants.
And do we have any power to make sure it's a functioning HOA once it gets approval and starts getting built? How do we determine it's functionable?
I believe our ordinance does require at the outset that there is sufficient revenue established on the front end to enable the homeowner association to take over responsibility for infrastructure within the subdivision.
And that's any subdivision, that's not just?
That's right. And that, that there are certain things that occur before the developer, who typically is in control of the homeowners association, must fulfill before turning it over to the residents. Now, after that, the county really doesn't have. Now, after that, the county really doesn't have any control over what is a, in essence, a nonprofit corporate entity, and how it governs and operates.
So if we have no say-so over that, so after a couple of years when it's turned over to the homeowners, it's out of our hands where, whether it would be 55 or not?
I wouldn't say it was out of our hands, because it would be a violation of the preliminary plat use permit, assuming the board approves the subdivision, but then the county co-enforcement would become involved, and that's when we would have to do age verification and evictions of folks that would be under 55 years of age.
So it would embroil the county in a lawsuit, is what you're saying?
No. If they were to fail.
If it was to fail.
Right.
It could, it could end up in a lawsuit, I mean, many of our violations do.
The county would set out on its typical enforcement action, seek voluntary compliance after issuance of a notice of violation. Failure to comply then could result in issuance of civil citations daily for every day they're not in compliance, and then after we get to a certain amount of money, we then would have to file, we would file a complaint seeking judicial assistance with enforcement of the condition.
You can sue anybody for anything, you can sue anybody for two hot cup of coffee, that light could fall down and hit me in the head, and I could sue the county too.
Well, I'm just, that, that's.
I mean, I'm just saying, there's, in today's times, the sue happy world.
But that's, that's the steps the county would have to take in order to seek enforcement.
We went through this years ago on age-restricted communities when we wrote the ordinance, and these people that buy entities are very enforceful on their age restrictions, that's why they want to be there, they don't want to hear kids running around screaming and playing, and.
Oh, and it's funny that you mention that, because I just got done finishing my, visiting my mom in South Florida.
The village.
Surrounded by all kinds of similar communities, and if, if anyone's lived in an HOA before, live in an HOA that's 55 and older.
Everybody's home.
I am telling you, they bought in there for a reason, nobody moves to, I mean, nobody moves to a 55 and older community because they want kids there.
I had to get permission to go and want to buy a car.
Right.
From a guy.
So I'm, I mean, anything can fail, there is no guarantee, but, but they are the most self-enforcing entity, I.
I don't, I don't, I don't know how many, I hate to use Seinfeld as an example, but remember when he would go down and visit his parents in the HOA meetings they had? They're very.
They're engaged.
Saying what's going on.
Yeah.
It's, to quote, anyway, if the Karen analogy is, is true, I mean, my dad stays in a place part-time right now, and, and they will kick you out in a flipping heartbeat, it is, they are not kidding.
But you can also look, I've got a cousin that lives in a, or lived in a 55 or older community in Yorktown, a very nice one, and there were people with children in the, because if they violate and, you know, move kids in, then you're, if the HOA, the group has to hire attorneys, a lot of times they're not interested in doing that.
I don't know, there's a lot of Kyles and Karens that live in 55 and older, I'm just saying, to use your analogy.
That's true.
There's a, there may be a rule around, like Tammy was talking about with the email from Jamie Schwedler about the 80% rule, so it may not be an apples-to-apples comparison. In this case, they're, they're saying 100%, nobody below the age of 55 is residing in the neighborhood.
Yeah, they're not gonna, they're not even allowing.
Not happening, right.
Okay.
No, that's, they're, yeah, the 80% rule is a typical, I believe, is what she was.
55 and older.
Yeah, and they're proposing 100%, that everyone in the neighborhood would have to be 55 or older, and that, in her letter, it was 80%, and one of them had to be 55. You could be married to a younger spouse, for instance, and in this case, you can't do that. If you're gonna get remarried to a 45-year-old, she or he is not moving in with you.
She's got to live at the other house.
She's got to live at the other house, right.
She can't even visit.
You got to maintain your house.
And I will remind, this is a community that was, been pointed out several times in the land use plan updates, it's needed in Currituck County.
And how did the one down in Grandy turn out?
We've not ever had one.
We did, Waterside Villages was.
Well, Waterside Villages, but it failed to begin with.
That was '07, '08, right, '06?
It was, yeah, it was right during, it was the '07 during the market crash.
It was a byproduct of the economy.
But it's busy now, it's, I mean, it's.
Yeah, it's a nice neighborhood.
Yeah, they removed, they came back before the board, it was developed as an age-restricted community, it was not a viable community, so they came back before the board had that, actually, it went bankrupt, the bank took possession of it, and the bank petitioned the commissioners to remove the age requirement, and you did, so they were able to sell to, to any age.
And that's what I meant by not have one.
If, if timing was bad. Yeah, kind of a national housing market crash.
Tammy, you remember where you were at?
I do, I do. Just to get this in for legal purposes, we're using the policy in the land use plan as HN1, which refers to location and density factors, because when the, once the land use plan is amended for full service, then that would be applicable. The Mayock Small Area Plan, we're using that FLU1 that promotes compatibility between new development and existing development. You have, we're not going to go over this any other than just a brief summary, planning staff does have concerns that if the HOA is not viable, or if they no longer wish to participate in that voluntary age-restricted community, that they will have to voluntarily come in, amend their conditional zoning for the project to allow someone less than 55 to live there. And then if that happens, there are school capacity concerns in the Mayock region, specifically Mayock Elementary. And it, as we've discussed, it's the intent for the HOA to be responsible for this, but as you well know, staff typically, I won't say typically, often ends up having to step in and enforce things for HOAs that, that are also covered under county regulations. And that's a, that's a concern. I'm not going to read all of these to you, you know them by heart, but these are the zoning legislative review standards in the ordinance that, that's a guide for the board to use to consider whether to approve or deny a conditional zoning request.
Tammy, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Typically, and this is just my experience from what, now, it, the developer, it was 80 lots, so he sells those 80 homes, the developer slash the decorum or whatever, he's in charge of that HOA until everything is completely sold out, and then he turns it over to them, so he would be over top of every home that was purchased in there.
I don't think that's quite correct, I believe the U D O requires that to turn over at 51%.
Yeah.
Was it 51%?
Yeah.
Seventy-five.
Oh, that's right, it was amended, that's right, 75.
Not before 75.
Not before, yes, not before 75%.
Thanks, that's, I just, I didn't know if it was the 100% the whole time, so 80, 75%, okay. Thank you.
Tammy, can I ask you a question about, one of the things about the proposed plan here is, that concerns me, is the density. Can you give me the density for the surrounding subdivisions roughly, like Windswept Pines, George's Vineyards, Hidden Oaks, and Baxter Lane Estate?
I don't have that information in front of me, but I can give you some pretty close estimations.
Okay, that's all I need.
Hidden Oaks is pretty similar, the one to the south. I believe Baxter Lane Estates, those lots are a little bigger and a little less dense. Across the streets, you'll see some 10-acre lots, some 3-acre lots in that area, and then when you get back here to Windswept Pines, it's also similar to what this request is. And one of the things that the developer is proposing that I should have pointed out is additional landscaping along the front to try to mitigate some of those off-site views.
What about Shingle, Mackland and Drive, Shingle Land, they're, it's about, it's fairly, they're, those lots are what, 35 to?
I didn't review that one, so I'm not sure.
I think it's similar size.
I can get that information for you, though.
I would also toss out that, especially in the older communities, less grass is better. I was at the community meeting for this, and I had a follow-up conversation, and I'm gonna put Eric on the spot. There is a major improvement of the ditch along Baxter Lane as part of this, correct? Or should I wait for the applicant?
Yeah, why don't we?
Yeah, never mind.
Yeah, never mind, yeah.
Wait for the applicant.
Yes, and the applicant, we'll go in detail on that.
Okay, we're to the consistency and reasonableness statements, and the technical review committee believes that the conditional zoning request is consistent with and amends the 2006 land use plan by designated the property as full service on the land use map, and because the amendment recognizes and implements the full service designation of the Mayock Small Area Plan, the request is reasonable and in keeping with changed conditions acknowledged by Mayock Small Area Plan and addresses the demonstrated community need for providing full service. I'm not going to read all of these to you again, they are the age, these are the conditions that the applicant has agreed to, they are the age restricted restrictions, the drainage conditions, and then the TRC conditions as well. Now, on October 12th, the planning board did recommend denial of this request, but it was a tied vote, there were, there were four members there that night, and it was a split vote of two to two, so that's, that's why they did go forward with, it does go forward with a denial vote. I will be happy to answer any questions, or if you want me to go into more detail about the individual conditions, I can do that.
Any questions at this time from the board? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and then ask if the applicant can come forward, please. Thank you, Ms. Glave.
Yes.
So I'm not going to be the first one to come up here and not wish Commissioner Etheridge happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Wise man. Call her at 6:00 tomorrow, I'm calling her at 5:00.
And I also do like the saying, as the county attorney can attest, but I think I'll spare you that experience tonight. So, when you do the summary of the request, I think I'm just gonna move right into some of the details of, of the redesign. So we redesigned this from where we were a couple of years ago to accomplish several things. One is we reduced the density by 48 units.
We increased the lot size.
By 48, by 50%. We increased the open space by 38%. We reduced lot coverage by one-third. We consolidated and maximized, and you see in this area, the stormwater retention in order to provide the greatest benefit for the community and, and the area. And we're providing amenities that are now geared toward older adults. We're also still adding to the tree buffers along both the east and the south lines, and have now added a tree buffer along Baxter Lane as well. So there are, we prepared some details of the three main amenity areas. We're gonna have an attractive entrance at the west end, and one of the things we're trying to do here is to emphasize this entrance, entrance in order to keep most of the traffic entering there, since some residents were concerned about traffic on Baxter Lane and entering at the second entrance. We talked about actually removing the second entrance, but in consultation with staff, they thought we needed to leave it here, but we are emphasizing this one is the main entrance, we'll have the entrance signage and your, your kind of sense of arrival. We have a dog park here with nice landscape buffering, and this area is also going to contain the community mail area. And then we have adjacent to the lake, this nice garden area with benches, probably a fire pit, areas for lawn games, those kinds of things. In answer to an earlier question, Commissioner Jarvis, the Hidden Oaks density was 1.8 units per acre. And I do have a, I'm gonna pause here for a second, I've got a slide that didn't make it into the presentation that I'm gonna, I'd like to hand out, talking about particular enforceability. I'm just trying to make sure I got enough copies. So as staff said, it is enforceable by, by county staff under U D O Section 9.5, similar to other zoning conditions, but, you know, one thing I want to point out is if they ever wanted to change it, it would essentially be starting over, would be going back through another pre-application conference, would be going through another community meeting, we would be submitting a new application, going through another technical, another TRC review, would be going through another hearing with the planning board, and we'd be coming back to this board for another public hearing to try to change the condition. I can, it is so unlikely that that would happen, is to, probably not even be feasible, but, but you do have enforcement by the homeowners via the restrictive covenants. Declaration runs with the land, is binding on subsequent purchasers, the, even if the HOA, and the HOA's responsibility to enforce those covenants, but even if they don't, homeowners have the right to enforce them on their own, under both state, federal and state law. So just going roughly back through the other conditions, the drainage improvements, we are going to model Baxter Lane ditch to its outlet all the way to, to the creek, we will, and prior to the first phase going to record, we'll do this widening, deepening, putting the Baxter Lane ditch on grade, laying its slopes back, recording the maintenance easements. The funding will be set up with the, with the HOA at the beginning, as Ms. Glave said, we will be designing for the 100-year storm and constructing burns around the development to make sure what's contained, and replacing the undersized outlet. Right now, there is, you know, that is the big restriction to, to drainage from this whole area, and I think we can solve that problem. Just looking at how that looks on the map, you all recently approved Phase 3 of Windswept Pines, which has a condition that this drainage, additional drainage outlet to the north here would be implemented subject to obtaining the right of access, and most of those have been obtained. This one, this is the Baxter Lane portion that we will be improving with this project, here's the culvert replacement, and as the county manager, county attorney indicated, that right. that right of access has already been obtained, so that, that's pretty much a done deal.
Right of access to that culvert replacement repair?
Yes.
But we don't have the easement yet, but we've spoken to the person in interest, yes.
It's been promised. And the adjacent homeowners have agreed. And we have agreed to, as the county's request, to lower the water line at the end of Baxter Lane, and, and of course, we just talked about the process of the, of the condition ever needed to be amended, that's, that's unlikely. So, county went over the conditional zoning standards, there are 11 of those, I'm not going to go through them here, but I will touch on each of them briefly as we go through the rest of the slides. The Moyaczimal area, and the 2006 land use plan recognizes a density of 1 to 2 units per acre. The Moyaczimal area plan recognizes a density of 1.5 to 3 underlying units per acre in the full service, which this has under the small area plan, and we are actually just below the low end of that, at 1.49. As Ms. Glave indicated, 160D allows that rezoning to simultaneously amend the, or actually results in that, amending the land use plan to make the future land use map then consistent. Also, changing additions of the demand for housing in Moyaczimal, and particularly with the aging population. Projections are that, that the population is aging, and I've seen as much as 50% of the future housing stock is going to be desired by people over 55 years of age in the Moyaczimal area. We do address a community need, particularly in terms of drainage improvements, and then also, of course, housing for active adults. This proposal is not in conflict with the UDO, and we will, of course, apply for a special use permit at the next stage of approval if this is successful, and we'll meet all applicable standards of the UDO. In terms of compatibility with the surrounding area, the size of the lot is 50% larger than those at Hidden Oaks. We're also buffering it. The lots, lots are somewhat actually larger than Windswept, or somewhat smaller than Windswept Pines to the north and Baxter Lane to the west, but they're closer to the village center, and we are providing a tree buffer. The lots are set back and buffered from Baxter Lane and from the highway. We will manage the drainage from the 100-year storm, so we're anticipating not only no adverse impacts, but a positive impact on the neighborhood. It's a logical development pattern, it's basically an infill development. If you look at the map of the surrounding development, and we're at Baxter Station here, is essentially on the east side of 168, the only track that hasn't already been developed. You've got Hidden Oaks here, you have Shingle Landing here, you've got Moyac Crossing in this area, I'm sorry, this is, yeah, this is Shingle Landing. Then you've got Baxter Estates and farther, the Landing, and then to the north, Windswept Pines, and then, and this is already developed. Oh, Moyac Crossing here? I think it was just under 2 units per acre.
Mr. Bissell, are those gonna be septic systems on there?
They will.
They will, and what's the soil condition or perk testing? Is that, do you have to do a lot of fill to get that, or?
There will be fill, but that'll be accommodated by the, by the drainage plan and the berm we're doing around the, so the berm will be higher than the fill.
So the, the whole, the whole perk test across there shows it's gonna need to be filled for, for septic?
Yes. And actually, there's a letter in your packet from the,
I was looking at that.
The health department that says that, you know, the plan that we proposed is suitable to them, and they will anticipate issuing permanent series lots.
Also, on, I think it's the last page, maybe, of your plan set in your packet, there shows a typical lot layout with an example of the septic system.
So just to reconfirm, this is, you're proposing 100%, 55 and older means no kids, no nothing, it's not gonna have any impact on the schools?
That's right.
He also, a few minutes ago, said this is gonna be a, a community for active older adults, but looking over the plan, there's a dog park and a little fountain, and I know somebody in the TRC comments said, you know, where's pickleball and where's a tennis court?
That was Larry.
Pickleball's quarter of a mile up the road.
There are actually areas, if we go back to this silly here. Yeah, this is, this is a, over a half acre in area right here, there, there's room to, to put in some outdoor game type of stuff.
Is that like a walking track or something right there?
This, yeah, this is a, these are walkways, true walkways, this is a seating area with benches, this is a pergola. But all this is community open space.
That, and that busts up to the, I guess that's the big drainage pond and all that stuff right there?
It is, and that's, I can't remember the acres, I think it's between four and five acres of stormwater pond there. Probably good for fishing, too.
And I guess these are all gonna follow suit and be slab-style homes, like everything else around?
Probably raceway. That shows it in perspective.
So are there two entrances to this development?
There are.
Or is there a suggested second entrance?
No, there is a second entrance, it's just the emphasized.
Okay.
And then there's connectivity here to, to Hidden Oaks that goes over to that connector road to Shingle Landing.
One of my concerns is traffic there on Baxter Lane. This, this is gonna generate a great deal of traffic on a road that already has a lot of congestion. And I don't know that a second entrance is the solution there. I saw that NC DOT didn't see the need or predict that there would be a need for a light. I guess they're used to living in Raleigh.
Well, one of the things with, with an age-restricted community like this, you're not gonna have the number of trips that you would have with a standard community, so they're considering that. And the other consideration is that, you know, eventually there will be a light here because directly across 168 is one of the two main entrances to Kerfuk Station, so we're pretty confident there will be a traffic light there eventually.
So you think with this age group, it'd be less traffic?
Oh, yeah, they're not taking kids to school, they're not.
My dad leaves the house one time a day.
Soccer practice, you know.
And that's no joke. Can't go anywhere twice.
Well, Katie, how many times do you leave the house today?
A lot.
My father leaves once. Well, her birthday's tomorrow, she's 23.
Speaking of the houses, what, what size house are we talking about?
We're talking about houses that are really very similar to the ones that are in the adjacent communities. They're probably in a range from 18 to 25 hundred square feet typically.
That's a pretty big house for two old folks who never leave the house.
People have lots, people have lots of stuff.
That's almost 55 in a bomb.
A two-story house.
I'm only five years out. Mike's looking for a new house.
I would pass it a few years ago.
So we're anticipating zero impact on schools, other impacts through good design, no adverse impact on land values, which of course will provide expert testimony on at the SGP. We can actually help with land values, I think, by solving the existing drainage problems, so we think it's gonna be in harmony with the UDO and the public interest. We already looked at the similar homes that are typical of the area, and we believe that this meets the 11 standards for approval of a conditional zoning. Do you have any other questions?
Okay. Not as a community meeting, where you've got a chat. And you talked about, I'd like to go out to the road for the ditch on Baxter Lane, and we've heard about the undersized culvert that's up too high, I can't tell you how many times we've heard about that.
To repeat, I had my mic off, sorry. So going to the, the ditch improvements and the undersized culvert at the end of Baxter Lane, and I'm gonna kind of put Eric on the spot, but, but, maybe even Dylan as well, but I think the two conversations that I've had with you all, and you can nod if you agree, or, would have some of the most significant impact on getting water out of the area, that amongst all of the, you know, improvements that we've discussed and looked at, that these, these two things would have dynamic impact on getting rid of water. Is that, is that an accurate summary? Dylan was nodding yes, and Eric's nodding yes. Let the record show, they're both nodding yes. And by the way, Kevin, we're past seven.
Okay.
Ask the question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, say if I move in there and I decide I don't like it.
You're only 22.
And I sell the house, and it's sold to someone who's 40 years old that's coming here, how do we enforce that problem?
Well, first of all, they're entering into a contract with the HOA and all of the neighbors who already own in there, that they are going to be 55 and older.
So when I put my house up for sale, 'cause I've never lived in a, a community like that, I put my house up for sale and somebody offers to buy it and they're 40 years old, and I sell it to them.
First of all.
So I can't sell it to them until the HOA tells me I can sell it to them?
They could occupy in 15 years.
So, let's just say you are 40 years old, which we know your 23 happy birthday, by the way, and say, you're, you're sitting with your real estate agent at the, at the house, or at the time of contract, you have to present valid identification for everybody that's gonna be involved in that contract, which is vetted through the, the state and federal government, through the HUD program.
And that's, that's on the contract?
And that is, that is analyzed every two years, where the HOA management service has to send off the resident's name, proof of identification, and so forth, to vet those individuals that are living in that house every two years. But it also, they're signing the covenants, there are recorded documents at the courthouse saying they understand you have to be 55 and older to live in this neighborhood. They're signing legally, a legal doc, and I could probably speak a little better than me, a legal document, a contract, and the covenant saying that they are. They're also showing proof of, or verification through their identification.
So every two years, who's gonna go around to these houses and make sure that these people are?
It's part of the management process when you, when you enter into these state agency and federal agencies that regulate these communities, where certain signage we have to use, it's a whole process through the state, it's not just.
I mean, who, who comes in and checks?
The HOA management group. It's a management group that is, that regulate, or that hired by the HOA that vets every two years these people. And first and foremost, the, like Commissioner Beaumont said, the, the, my personal opinion's the same as his, these self-regulate themselves. If I'm 55 and somebody's 18 and 22 that moved in next door, it ain't gonna happen. I mean, or if they have a eight-year-old that's running the street, you know, going crazy, and they're trying to sit at, at the swing at the pergola and have a glass of wine, and there's somebody screaming up and down the sidewalk, it ain't gonna happen. But that being said, the HOA is held to a standard by the management company, which is held to a standard by the state and federal government. So it's not like we can just up and say, oh, we don't want, we, we don't want this. Like Mark said earlier, we gotta start from scratch, get your approval, planning board approval, TRC approval, and the whole nine yards, so.
And you say it's not gonna happen, but it always happens.
Where, where is it happening?
Somebody breaks, somebody always breaks the rules. So say if somebody moves in, or somebody's living there and their kids are on drugs, and they pull their grandkids in, what's gonna happen there?
Well, then they're not, they're not allowed to live there. I mean, it's that simple. I mean, these, these communities.
Who's gonna enforce that?
The same ones that do across the entire United States of America, the federal government.
So the federal government would addict them?
Absolutely. It's part of a program. And, Justin. Like I said, we have to have certain signage we're allowed to put up, I mean, they're very strict on the way they regulate these 55 and older.
Real estate agent is in violation of their license.
The real est-
So, and another, another point that's missed here, and I bought in these type, not this type of neighborhood, but HOA neighborhoods, you know, when you go to do the contract, that covenants, the restricted covenants is part of the contract.
Every contract.
You're going through, signing, initiating it, I mean, I, it was, it was very inclusive.
You initial every page of them covenants, and you say that-
Yeah, it was very inclusive, so you're not, you're not gonna mistakenly buy in this neighborhood, and, and probably your attorney's not gonna let you, he's just gonna say you can't, say it happened.
And the agents are, are trained, obviously, and these, to look, they have to get a photo ID, I mean.
That's right.
They're not gonna sell to a 20-year-old.
And let a 35-year-old live in there, they're gonna call 911 and say somebody's living there illegally.
Well, if an agent gets caught selling one of them, they could lose their real estate license.
Absolutely.
So let's do a worst-case scenario like a Waterside Villages. Let's suppose that, 'cause in the packet, I think, one of the questions at the community meeting was, when will the houses start being built, or something to that effect, and the reply is basically two years from now. And since we don't have a crystal ball, let's suppose that in the next two years, the market turns. If that happens, and this becomes a defunct venture, once we rezone it, then the property's already rezoned, and I know you'd have to come back for another condition.
Well, at that time, turn it down, don't turn it down now.
But yeah, when it comes back rezoning, then we, I guess, what you're saying is we don't have to approve the rezoning.
Exactly.
We can say it's gotta stay at 55.
Exactly.
How about if there's half built up, there's 50, 40 homes in it?
That's all the more reason to deny it. At that time, don't deny something because a hypothetical recession's gonna happen. And that, and Waterside Villages, by the way, let me back up, that was a beautiful community. 2008 was a rough time for all of us, and I can tell you, you won't be dealing with me at the rezoning, you'll be dealing with the bank, just like you did there. And again, that, that, that's irrelevant to today because we have to come back before you, or the bank has to come back before you. We're not asking to rezonate to 55 and under, we're asking to rezonate to 55 and older today. And that's the conditions, and we, you're, you're correct, Commissioner Jarvis, we do not have a crystal ball, we hope things keep the same way. We see, we see an opportunity here to capitalize on a market that's needed, is 55 and older, and that's what we're trying to do. Now, if there, if another recession comes, the bank might come back and ask for it.
Even then, though, Moyaczimal is not like Grandi.
And it's that 80-lot suburb.
The Moyaczimal market slid, but it didn't get to nothing like, like Grandi.
Here's one thing I think you can, crystal ball, this property is going to develop sometime or another now.
I agree.
Do we take a chance on it at 55 plus, or we wait till it comes in 55 and under, and then we got schoolchildren to deal with?
Right.
I think, and, and this is part of, you know, I think, Bob, you and I spoke when this concept was even floated, right? There's, not a ton, but there's a whole lot of houses that anybody can move in and turn around and sell it to anybody else they want to. There is not many places in this area, in Moyaczimal specifically, that is out the gate trying to be 55 and older, and it's, it's a different offering, it's, it's a different product, and, and I think, you know, it'll be interesting to watch, because I, I, I mean, my expectation is that this is very popular, and I don't think you're gonna have a problem with people.
I would disagree with you on one thing. You said there's not many, there's not any.
Well, that's true.
Sorry.
Possible, come on now.
This will be the first of its kind if it's approved.
And this is federally regulated.
State and federally.
State and federally. State and federally, yes, sir.
Regulated, okay.
Like I said, they give us a list of signage requirements that we have to put up notifying, like in different segments of the community, that it is age-restricted.
Now, do these two-year reports have to go to the federal, to a federal agent?
To the federal, yeah, the HUD.
So the federal HUD has to receive these two years? If not, then they're on somebody's case?
Yeah.
And then, one other thing.
And I, I'm sorry.
So, okay, this backs up to, is it Hidden Oaks? Which is right across the street from the Moyac Park.
Yeah, it's directly across the street.
And if I'm remembering correctly, the closest feature at the park is the pickleball courts.
Correct. We didn't want to over-picketball.
I'm just saying, you know.
This does have a walkway connection to Hidden Oaks.
Yeah, you walk from that to that, to stretch out to play pickleball.
There's your active...
Senior 55 and older.
55 senior.
Now, is it walk or golf cart?
It'll be golf cart.
Yeah, you're supposed to be active.
Any other questions for the applicant? Yes, sir. Last year, oh.
Oh, I thought you said questions.
I thought you said questions, too. I thought you said questions. Yeah, questions, okay. Any other questions for the applicant on the board? Okay, thank you. At this time, then I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing portion of this. I have no one signed up for the public hearing. If you're here and you get a chance to sign up, if you could come forward and just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Richard Truand and I live at 151 Baxter Lane. I'm right across from Mr. Ballabette. Happy birthday to you, ma'am.
Well, good choice.
I hope you get to be my age. Well, anyway, you know, I have no problem with this development going up. And I've been coming to all these meetings, trying to fight unions about drainage, and I feel like I've actually lost the battle. For my retirement gift, I bought myself a European English Bulldog, Grand Champion parents. And the only reason that I'm still here today fighting a losing battle is because I got a bulldog mentality. Now, for Windswept Pines that you put in behind me, there was two ponds that back up to my land that they put in. And the ponds are supposed to hold six inches of rain. But at four inches of rain, the ponds is overflowing, their overflows into my ditches because the water in the ponds has nowhere to go. At five and six inches of rain, when they put these ponds in, they're back up against my land, they never built the brim of the pond up that was facing toward my land. They only built the side up facing the development. At five and six inches of rain, I got two ponds overflowing their banks and coming on my land. And because y'all people, y'alls keep putting so much water into that ditch on Baxter Lane, you see, what you got when they keep talking about fixing the 45-inch pipe down the end of the road, well, from 168 coming under the road, you have a 40-inch pipe right there where the water's coming into that ditch. From the Windswept Pines development, you have three 28-inch pipes just flowing into that ditch on Baxter Lane. And if they put this development up and the water from the roads is flowing into that ditch, you see, when they did the Windswept Pines, when they did the first part of the development, I said, it ain't wonderful. But when they did the next phases, you had the water from the roads back there coming into the pond, and it was a disaster. You had, you got too much water flowing into two small ponds that can't hold it. And then, when all this stuff, so I got water from the ponds overflowing their banks and coming on my land and all my neighbors, now we got so much water coming into the Baxter Lane ditch that it is backing, it's causing a backflow. For our ditches that are supposed to drain, the water from the ditch on Baxter Lane is now backflowing, coming up. So I got water coming from two sides of me, from the Windswept Pines development, plus I got the water on my land that has nowhere to go because there's so much water in the ditch on Baxter Lane that now it is backflowing, coming up on our lands. I've seen times where you had six inches of rain and I got 10 inches of water on my land from the backflow. And I have a problem with that. I have never had water in my garage with five inches of rain until unions did the last development at Eagle Creek. And now unions want to come and put another development in there. I have, you see, when you keep talking about replacing this one little pipe down the end of the road and lowering it, well, the whole way down Baxter Lane, where people's driveways is, they got a pipe that runs under there, underneath all the driveways going down. What you really need to do is to fix this problem. If you're going to run the water into that ditch and down Baxter Lane, is replace all those pipes going the whole way down Baxter Lane Road so that you have enough pipes to get the water out of there. You're trying to put too many glasses of water in a pitcher that can't hold it. And it always happens the same. The homeowners that is paying taxes and their taxes keep going up, it's even starting to affect a lot of the people's septic systems on Baxter Lane down there because the water's flowing up and it's starting to mess our septic system. I'm even kind of starting to worry about the people at Windswept Pines that's got those $300,000 and $400,000 homes back there, that's got their houses built on slabs. And the water in the ponds already ain't got nowhere to go. And if you put more water into that ditch, I'm worrying about the water. I've even talked to some of the people back there where they say, they're starting to worry about the water coming up on their lands to mess their septic systems up. When you have a house that's built on a slab, you ain't got much, you do not have much leeway to get rid of that water coming out of your house for your septic system. If your house is up on a foundation, at least you got a little bit up above, you know, you got a little bit of leeway. It just seems like I have nobody to help me. As much as I've come to these meetings from the beginning, and the main thing they told me was when they built Windswept Pines, it is not our job to solve all the water problems in the county. Well, if you're going to build a development, don't you think it's somebody's job to figure out how to get rid of that water? What do I do? Let's say happy birthday.
Eric, have you seen, if I could ask you some questions? If you want to come up for a minute, I just want... Yeah, because I mean...
I'm glad you coordinated your colors.
Yeah, you guys look great, by the way.
All right, you've heard his concerns, Eric, and with the water flowing. I mean, has anybody looked at that and seen it, or can you address that concern?
So Mr. Truand has got a point about, there is a lot of driveways between the Baxter Station and the end where it exits across the landing. They are larger culverts. You can tell they were put in as 60-inch or five-foot culverts on average. I think, I would say that we let Mr. Bissell do his model and make sure in the model that he's looking at upstream and downstream. And he's accounting for what's coming from the west side of Highway 168 and what's coming through the kamps and what's coming through Windswept Pines and take that into account. I know the conditions only talk about improvements to the Baxter Lane ditch across its property. And I don't know if, I don't know if it would be fair to ask that developer to go replacing every driveway culvert, but I think...
See, that is concerning. Have you, is that the problem?
It seems like for all of us, the main culvert is this culvert replacement that we're calling, right? We're not seeing a restriction at the driveway for sale, we're seeing it back up because it can't do that.
And, correct.
That's the same area, too, where there was all the stuff, where the clog was with the vehicles and all that stuff. Same area.
And that culvert, I think it's a 36-inch, but when Mr. Bissell is done with his model, it might be 336 inches.
Right.
So we don't know how big that culvert is going to be, but regardless, I think he needs to size it for the size it needs to be. And then he can also look at any driveway culverts while he's doing his model and see if any of them are a problem.
Whatever happens in that area, though, I mean, he's laid out what's going on and...
Right. And I'm sitting here sharing a map on this little computer. Is this...
Eric, I have a question.
It's on the screen.
Yeah, it's up there. Eric, I have a question. With the culvert replacement, where, which it's known, and that's like anything around Baxter or anything, we always talk about that. And the 14 lots, the Windswept, was that three, Phase 3 or four, three?
Three.
With all that drainage improvements, I mean, so he should catch it on the back end and the front end?
That was, I was going to actually ask Mr. Bissell to come back up and talk about Windswept.
Okay.
Where's his property located again on here?
Across the street. He's right in between the two red lines, probably.
You see where it says Baxter Lane ditch is right north of Lane?
Okay, he's right, okay.
Right there, that lot.
Oh, those are the two lakes he's talking about.
Yeah, and he's got a lake on each side.
And his backyard right to that red line for the new ditch that we're proposing. And that's, when they came in the neighborhood, the Windswept Pines, the drawings, the diagrams, you know, they made mathematical sense. The calculations were correct for the ponds and Mr. Clevis took me through this. The issue is that the whole drainage is realigned in this entire, it used to kind of zigzag right to the east of Mr. Truand's property. And after it was realigned further to the west through those triple 36-inch culverts we talked about going under the road, the field behind it could easily take a large deluge where he had soybean fields. And since then, even though they have a correct stormwater plant with the pond size, there's a lot of lots that have been raised up. And you put this impervious surface there regardless of what kind of fill or what kind of, you know, lot size that, you know, where it used to take on more water and it would absorb better and, you know, the solution, that's why we talked about this secondary ditch right here, because now you essentially kind of create a low spot. I can see where you're pointing. I'm sorry. I'm on the top of the screen where he says Windswept Pines Improvement, that ditch. Right along that red line, to the south of that red line, I'm sorry. I'm too used to Zoom meetings nowadays. So he looked right to the south of that line and that's where there's kind of a low spot now. And that's what Mr. Truand was referring to. I've seen it there. This is, his whole backyard is inundated with water. I mean, I'd also mentioned, it was worse last year during, we had three storm events where you had six to five inches of rain, like three 10-year storm events in one year. So it was a... All right, has this year been equally disruptive or...
Well, the other day, we had two inches of rain and two inches of rain filled that ditch out on Baxter Lane, just with two inches of rain.
And the Baxter Lane ditch is also taking a run from countryside states and the neighborhoods on the other side. So it's kind of like a multiplier effect. When you have a big rain, and we have a 10-year, 2-year standard, when you get six, seven inches of rain, it's kind of hard to engineer any system that's backing. Unless you're going to, you know, use pumps and large...
Well, I guess the other concern, I mean, are the ponds, I mean, he mentioned something about the edges of the berms are not up to height. I mean, I don't know if that's true or not, or...
Well, they weren't for 10-year, right? The neighborhood Windswept Pines was designed to 10-year standard, right? And that, when you get six inches of rain, you're beyond a 10-year, 2-inch standard. So that's, the problem is, it was inundated. And I was going to ask Mr. Bissell to pop back up for a second and talk about, you touched on it for a minute when you were up here, but Windswept Pines, the proposed changes up there are significant on that final phase of Windswept Pines, right?
Well, they are. And they're, you know, and this is, Dylan will say, and this is intended, this is coming all the way back here to the corner of Mr. Truand's property with the intent of providing some relief for the phases that are already there as well. But just going back to Baxter Lane, there are two problems here, and I've observed this firsthand. You know, Baxter Lane ditch is not a very big ditch and it gets really overgrown quickly. I came and took some measurements after a significant rainfall event when the ponds were in Windswept Pines were full and the water was not flowing out of the subdivision like it's supposed to. And the reason was that this ditch was clogged with weeds. And so I came down here to this culvert and I took a water measurement there, and then I came up here to where the pipes leave Windswept Pines. And the surface of the water was two and a half feet higher here than it was here.
So how do we correct that?
And so Dylan then worked with DOT and they came in and they cleaned this out. And that water level dropped two feet almost instantly.
Okay.
But we've still got this culvert that's another two-foot problem.
Right.
And you've got 60-inch pipes here, as Eric said, for these driveways that are flowing into a smaller pipe here that's at a higher elevation. So that's the other side of the equation. So this was cleaned out once, but it's already growing back up and it's still too small.
So the improvements is that, when you said it's too small, it's being widened, correct?
And deepened.
And deepened.
Right.
And there's ditches on the other side of the...
Yeah, then, and then we can solve, you know, get rid of this constriction.
So you're seeing a significant drainage of that water, then?
Right. And then the third element is to put in this ditch, which provides yet, you know, provides some, so we're not putting any of Phase 3's water at Windswept Pines into this ditch.
Should actually be in that reduction.
So there should be a reduction, exactly.
So that culvert's going to make a big impact right there by increase?
Well, and with retaining, you know, designing this for the 100-year storm on Baxter Lane, we're going to be putting way less water in this ditch.
So that's 80 acres?
Than there is under 53 acres, 53 and a half roughly.
Okay, so basically, you're not going to have that tract of land immediately releasing its water. I mean, there will be some retainage on site and then slowly metering it out.
Right. Well, we're going to do a lot better than the 10 and 2 criteria.
What is 100-year retain, six?
I think it's roughly nine inches of rain.
As we'll see.
Yeah, okay.
Because that'll be released at the 2-year rate.
Right.
Okay, well, I guess from what I'm hearing then, with the culvert and the wide ditch and all that, then his concerns with the ditches in the front getting over capacity with two inches of rain, that should get resolved? Is that what I'm hearing?
He should see a big improvement with this...
And to the rear.
And maintain...
Right.
To both ways, front and back. And this lowered so that water, that water that's in these ponds can flow out the way it's supposed to.
When you, when you...
And provide this relief.
Who's on the mouse?
That will be, that's, that's a...
Yeah, he's jumping.
Or Tammy. So, Mark, at Windswept Pines, that ditch leaving that pond, was it, was your proposal to widen and do more improvements on that ditch along the...
No, the this ditch?
No, the northern ditch at Windswept, the one leaving the little pond over there where it starts right behind this property. Yes, that ditch. Was there some improvement for that, or are you just showing where the water's going to flow?
No, that's going to be widened.
Okay.
That ditch is very small right now.
Okay.
And we're sending very little water that way because of that pre-development runoff criteria. And I think there's something on the order of one cubic foot per second that goes into that ditch right now.
Commissioner White, that one we've been working with Dylan on, and that is actually conditioned.
Right. And it was conditioned, but I just wanted to reiterate what those conditions were and what you guys were trying to gain out of that. And one of them is stop this flowing of water onto these 10-acre lots below Windswept, so.
So the other thing... So, so the other thing, where the windswept pines terminates, improvement terminates, and it appears that once you get past that culvert replacement, you're almost in the wetlands, right? I mean, you're almost, I mean, that's the end of the water trail. There is no, you're dumping into a watershed like quickly.
And, and this is a watershed that was just cleaned out as part of the-
Right.
The landing development.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I mean, Eric, or did y'all add any more comments to that, or?
So Mr. Truann was correct about the berm.
Come on, come on, tell us a second.
The berm, the brim on that, and that'd be part of, you know, looking into, when we get to, you know, kind of staking out, surveying this ditch area, they could check it. I did notice that. I will, you know, say that. When I was out there, and I called Mr. Connor, I believe Mr. Connor is in charge of, of property management, looks for the ponds in the area, and I did point that out to him that some of the berms, the brim, whatever you call it, is, is kind of on the edge of that pond to keep it from, you know, too fast flowing into someone else's yard, basically. That might have been degraded or degraded, I mean, over the years, so.
So that's gonna be addressed?
We can definitely address that. I mean, it's not really up to me, but I did make that recommendation that, that he could look at as well.
Well, if the construction-
On foray into.
If, if the ponds were built as part of the stormwater plan, the maintaining of the stormwater plan, that doesn't go away. So if the ponds are no longer in compliance, then you need to look at getting them back to where they're supposed to be.
You know, I've listened to everybody talk about the developments, and they're gonna put this ditch in, and they're gonna do this, and it's gonna improve this. And then we have people who come in telling us that it's not improving it. The water's flooding their property. I, I just don't understand it. We just hear that I'm gonna do this, and I'm gonna do that, and everything's gonna be so much better for these property owners, and it's not better for them.
Eric, if, if we, if that culvert does not get replaced at the end there, what's gonna be the, the ongoing conditions?
No, it's gotta get replaced.
I mean, if, if it doesn't get, if those improve, if that improvement is not made at that culvert, is it gonna just be the same as it is right now, pretty much?
It's, I think Mr. Truann hit it on the head when he was talking about the water backs up. It's just gonna back up worse.
So in your opinion, I mean, that, that, I mean, it has to happen.
It's a, it's gotta be a condition of approval.
I mean, we've been trying to get that culvert replaced-
For a long time.
Baxter Lane to save.
And that's the one where we've, so far got a promise to get easement on it-
Yeah.
Right now.
Oh, yeah. The verbal from, right? The, the property owner gave you a verbal?
Yes.
Okay.
We put it on Facebook? I'm just kidding.
Okay. All right, any other, um, any other questions from staff to, or staff for the commissioners, for staff or the applicant? Oh, excuse me, let me back up here. Any other, anybody else wants to speak on public hearing? I just want, come back up again, I forgot. I didn't, I never close this, so come on up again.
I have a comment, audience. You know, I'm not asking for much, you fix a problem for 100 years. If you could just fix it for 20 years, and I'll be out of here, you'll never see me again. I'll be all up in heaven, okay? God bless y'all.
Well, we appreciate you coming up and letting us know. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, keep in mind that this is rezoning, and we do have the special use permit that these things must be done in order to grant a special use permit.
Yes, we still got a special use permit, so. All right, nobody, uh, does anybody else who didn't sign up would like to speak a public comment? Okay, here and now, I'm gonna go ahead and close the, the public hearing portion of this. Does, like, any commissioners have any further comments or questions?
I have one comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I have reservations about approving an 80 lot restricted development with the federal government enforcing it and making sure it remains age-restricted.
And I'm gonna read straight from the Federal Register about the Housing for Older Persons Act of 1995. It says, moreover, the housing facility or community may not evict or terminate leases of families with children in order to achieve occupancy of at least 80% of the occupied units by at least one person 55 years of age or older.
But this is gonna be, but there's not, the 80% rule is not gonna apply here because this is gonna be 100% correct.
But the key is, you may not evict, you may not evict or terminate the lease with families in order to achieve it when at least one person 55 of years of age or older lives there.
Minimum standard.
I'm just reading straight from-
No, I understand, I'm just trying, but I'm just, again, I'm just trying to clarify my mind too, because we're, if you don't start at 80%, then it's not-
But what this is saying is, if there's one person in the household that's at least 55 years of age, according to the Federal Register under the Housing for Older Persons Act, you cannot evict them. Or I should, since we're saying it's the federal government that's gonna evict them, the federal government is not going to evict them. So I have reservations as well. I don't, I don't think this is going to help our facilities. One of the things that our former county manager told us, that the biggest toolbox in managing growth is rezoning, and I am not against growth, but we have not done a good job of managing the growth in this area with traffic, with stormwater, with schools, and we have to start at some point to do that. We have to take responsibility for the disaster that we are creating, and putting a 55-year or older label on this is not solving unmanaged growth, the problems of unmanaged growth.
Okay, do we have any more questions or comments on the board?
That's, this isn't unmanaged growth. It's exactly that. We're managing it through restrictive covenants, through the rezoning process, which this Moyoc Small Area Plan does allow for. It is less than what density of what the Moyoc Small Area Plan calls for. So it is, it is managed growth. And at the onset, to always seek the negative, I, I just, it seems like we're, you're, you're putting a negative in place that isn't there yet. It, it's no different than when we, we had a bunch of discussions about the number of accidents that were gonna happen, and we needed a light at the water park, and, you know, we had this huge fear, and, and it didn't happen. These things are successful all over the country, and to somehow it's not gonna be successful here, it just, I have a hard time believing that it wouldn't be successful here. One thing is a certainty, the population is aging, and this product is exactly what is out there, and, and developers are moving towards it because they're recognizing that aging population. And for us to be afraid to have one development that's 55-plus, I just, I don't see it. So, it's my two cents. Thank you.
But it is, when you're talking about the growth, when you're saying 80 lots compared to right now, it would be 17 to 23 lots. So that is not controlling growth.
Okay.
We sit here and say that because it's in the Moyoc Small Area Plan, we take the Moyoc Small Area Plan, sometimes we think it's a wonderful thing, and then other times we don't even look at it. Other projects that have been approved by this board were not in the Moyoc Small Area Plan, and we rezoned it. So don't act like we're not trying to control growth, because there's, controlling growth is when you look at 17 lots compared to 80 lots.
Okay, well, they could have asked for 100 and some with it being up to two in the Small Area Plan, and if you walked across the road and hit a golf ball 150 yards, you could put 3,100 homes across the street. So, but that Currituck Station growth, 3,100 homes is okay, and we're looking at 80 homes, literally two football fields across the road. I mean, all the time and effort that we put in the Currituck Station, and that's in that same area, two football fields, 3,100 homes is okay, but a 55 and older community that is less and is compatible to everything around it, that's not okay? I'm lost.
So the, what we planned in Moyoc, we had a certain place where we wanted to control the growth.
I would say 200 yards is pretty much the same.
Well, in that area. But this board approved other pieces of property that are mega sites of houses, so we-
That's your opinion? That's, that's your opinion on mega sites of houses?
Okay.
Well, bottom line is, this is a segment of housing that is needed. We've not had one in the county. They're right across the line in Virginia Beach, Westminster Abbey, and things like that. They work, they will work if we give it an opportunity, but if we just say no, we're gonna see this as a 200-lot subdivision down the road.
Not unless we rezonate.
You're gonna, Moyoc is gonna grow. We're not gonna stop Moyoc from growing. It's how it grows. And if we can find housing opportunities where we're not putting demands on schools, we're not putting demands on social services, that's what we should be looking at in controlling growth. Growth, that's an asset.
Well said.
You will be putting services on social, uh, demands on social services. You will be putting demands if it's elderly people. There, there's a different, uh, social service that they would need from the county, like, we don't know how many times an ambulance would have to go up or, you know, different thing. So everything has, you can look at one thing one way and it's okay, and you can look at it another way and it's not okay.
And I'll just, I'm listening through all this and go through it. I had my questions, and they were answered, but my biggest thing with it was this too, was the impact on our schools, and that's why I want to make sure that it was 100%, not, no, 80, because if it was an 80% rule, then there was potential for kids to impact our school systems. It's not gonna tax our wastewater as it stands right now. And, um, yes, there's some improvements that are gonna be done with the, I mean, the culvert that, I mean, it sounds like to me from an engineer that needed to be done a long time ago. Um, we're gonna get-
I have been hearing about that culvert since the early days of becoming a commissioner.
So anyways, but the biggest thing for me was just to make it sure it wasn't gonna impact, um, the school systems with this, and, um, anyways, I just wanna make my comments out there. Do we have any more feedback or comments, questions from the board? Okay, here and now, I'm gonna go ahead and ask the board then if we have a motion. Is anyone prepared to make a motion at this time from the board? One way or the other, for approval or denial?
I'll roll the dice. I'd like to make a motion that we approve PB 2120 Baxter Station, CMXR. I don't know why I didn't get a motion sheet, some bar, Commissioner Beaumont. I hereby adopt resolution and move to approve PB 21-20 because the request is consistent with and amends the 2006 land use plan by designating this property as full service on the future land use map because the amendment recognizes and implements the full service designation of the Moyoc Small Area Plan adopted by the Board of Commissioners. The proposed growth density allocation of 1.49 dwelling units per acre is in keeping with full service designation of the Moyoc Small Area Plan. The designation identifies areas where there will be significant public investment in infrastructure and can support higher density of development. Policy FLU 1 promotes compatibility between new development and existing development to avoid adverse impacts to the existing community. And the request is reasonable and in keeping with change conditions acknowledged by the Moyoc Small Area Plan and addresses the demonstrated community needing, need of providing a full-service area that offers both residential and commercial uses in the development. Conditions for approval, the applicant and the Board of Commissioners must agree to the conditions of the approval. One, regarding age restriction, the use of the property shall be limited to an age-restricted residential community where all units are occupied by occupants 55 years of age or older. Before the issuance of the first building permit for the dwelling unit, developer will record a restrictive covenant in the Homeowners Association documents restricting the use accordingly, requiring occupants to certify the age of all household occupants at least once every two years and providing for enforcement of such restriction. Two, regarding drainage improvements, drainage improvements will be provided as follows. Before modeling of the Baxter ditch to its outlet to the Jarvis Landing property, based on the model results, make improvements to the Baxter Lane ditch along the Baxter Station property boundary, including widening, deepening, laying back side slopes, and putting on proper grade, putting on proper grade. Improvements two be completed prior to putting first plat phase of the subdivision to record. Record an easement along Baxter Station, part of the ditch, to provide access for ongoing maintenance. Include a provision in the covenants of Baxter Station that clarifies that the HOA will have the responsibility to maintain the Baxter Lane ditch through the subdivision at least annually, and budget for funding within the HOA dues structured to assure that the ongoing maintenance is funded. E, model the Baxter Station to manage the 100-year storm event and provide stormwater storage, including berms, as necessary to prevent runoff from Baxter Station during the 100-year storm event from adversely impacting off-site properties. F, if Currituck County is able to obtain the necessary right of entry agreements, the existing undersized culvert at Baxter Lane extension will be replaced with a properly-sized culvert set at the proper grade. Three, that the developer will lower or move the water line located at the end of Baxter Lane to provide proper separation to the new drainage culvert. Public utilities must approve the construction plan prior to work beginning on the culvert water line. Four, should the development stop participating in the voluntarily federally regulated age-restricted community program, an amended conditional zoning request must be approved prior to those less than 55 years old occupying a dwelling unit. And five, the 2006 land use plan, future land use map must be amended to identify the property as full service as part of the motion for the approval.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes 5-2. Thank you. Um, I'd say let's take a five-minute recess, and then we'll get started in new business. If they ever come back in like five minutes. Okay, everyone, we're gonna reconvene the, the Board of Commissioners meeting and get into our next agenda item, which is gonna be under new business, which is gonna be consideration of agreement for professional services for Phase 1 drainage improvements for Ocean Sands North and Crown Point Service District for watershed improvements, and authorize the county manager to execute an agreement. I believe, is this the county manager?
I can, but county engineer Eric Weatherly is also present. Do you have any detailed questions? This is the agreement without Marlon Associates to move forward on the Phase 1 drainage improvement for Ocean Sands North and Crown Point Service District.
Mike.
Get your mic on.
Sorry, Mike. Sorry.
It's okay.
Mike, Mike. Yeah, I got it. The contract is for the amount of $648,450 with reimbursable expenses not to exceed $17,000. It is for design, pre-construction, and construction services for this project. The complaint to take the easements required for the project has been filed, and the county is deemed to have possession of all those easements by virtue of the quick-take provisions in the general statutes. I'd be glad to answer any questions the board might have.
Any questions? Can I ask for a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay. I have a second for Commissioner Owen down here. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you. Questions, carries? The next item is Item B, Discussion of Service Contract with Koala Volunteer Fire and Rescue Squad, Inc. I believe Ike will let you-
Well, in 2017 into 2018, you, you remember that the, the board worked on a number of things to try to make agreements, acquisition of equipment purchases for volunteer fire departments consistent- departments consistent throughout the fire service and with the entities that the county Corolla Volunteer Fire Department did not sign the agreement when it was put forth in 2018. Most recently, it has presented that because of a grant application that will result in a significant amount of money toward the purchase of a ladder truck, that they would like to sign. The contract is, I guess, is needed in the grant application process. The 2018 contract was forwarded to Corolla Volunteer Fire Department. It came back with a number of modifications on it, different from that which had been approved by the Board of Commissioners for all the fire departments in 2018. I guess with some discussion with some of the board members, I felt like it needed to be placed on an agenda for this board to make a determination as to how it wanted to proceed with a contract, given that the, that the board had previously in 2018 approved the language and all the other fire departments have executed the same agreement. I will note that Mr. Almarzetti, who's here tonight, who is president of the, I guess, one of the corporate entities or for Corolla Fire and Rescue Squad Incorporated, in any event, he proposed some amendment to the contract that the Corolla Fire Department would be willing to sign. I have reviewed that and while I think it is missing some key provisions that the county ought to require in a future contract, as it has with the other fire departments, I think that is preferable to a contract that I just had an opportunity to scan tonight before the meeting began, that I understand was sent to some or all the board yesterday. So if, if the board's intent is to, for six months, have an agreement with Corolla Volunteer Fire Department that allows for them to apply for this grant, then I would suggest that you would authorize execution of the agreement that was proposed a couple of weeks ago as opposed to the one that was proposed yesterday, unless the board is intent on requiring at this time that Corolla Volunteer Fire Department sign the same agreement that everybody else has signed.
So we have time to go through this before next six months and discuss it.
Right.
And Commissioner Beaumont, I think you, you've had obviously a bit of discussion of this with.
Yeah, and, and so we're going to need to relook at, I think, all of the fire contracts coming up because since then, we've added Knott's Island as a, you know, that's a different entity and, you know, Corolla's gone full-time, you know, plus the volunteers. So we're going to need to rework some of the main, the overarching contracts, I think, throughout, throughout the county. But yeah, my, my recommendation would be, let's get something executed with them because that ladder truck, did we mention an amount?
It's over.
It's over a million dollars.
1.5 million is what it said in the agenda packet. 90%, the grant's 90% of 1.5 million.
And they're coming up with the rest of the money.
And I can tell you, every, just about every time I've seen the platform truck, which is what this one would replace, it's typically on jacks with something else dropped out and it's in work. And those are very effective when you have a high structure, which we don't have many of those in Corolla, but they reach really far back. So they can get, you know, far, further back on the lot and get over top of structures that are on fire.
Didn't we just have with the Hampton Inn?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so.
So definitely needed.
Make a motion or?
I, I move for approval.
Do they have, do the chief, does it chief, do they have anything they want to add?
I think we're just, you guys are here if you had any questions for them.
They've agreed to the, they've only agreed to the.
Yeah, they're.
Okay, I didn't know if they're.
Well, okay.
I just want to add that the platform truck that we're looking to get a grant to replace is 30 years old. It's been refurbished 10 years ago and under fire regulation, the truck is really beyond It works, it's getting us through, but we have an 80% chance of getting a million-dollar grant to replace it. But I need a contract to move forward with the grant. And a grant's opened up today.
Okay.
Okay. I'll second.
We have a motion for, from Vice Chairman for, for approval.
Second.
Have a second. Is there any further discussions that we have on this, need on this? Okay, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We'll go to that one.
How long will it take to get delivery of the new truck?
A year.
Two years.
A year till approval. And I, I don't think apparatus takes long, less than a year. Any apparatus.
Let's get Knott's Island to order it now.
And, oh, that's a great idea. We'll run it through Knott's Island, it'll take five.
That was a bad comment. Sorry, okay. The next item is the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Have a motion.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Second. Any discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you for a great meeting tonight, everyone.